And you're live now?
Thank you.
All right. Cool, awesome. Well, thank you guys for having me. Today, what I'm gonna go over is our Open Data Portal, which we launched last year. But given everything going on, it kinda, you know, it was kinda one of those checkmarks that we did. But what I really wanna do is demonstrate what its purpose is and what its capability is. And then I wanna segue that into one of the new applications that we're working on to kinda replace existing applications that we have related to GIS and parcels and whatnot. So, really, and I'll be going through this, but this first Open Data Portal that we have right here, and this is the homepage of it that I'm showing on the screen here. And this is a link that's currently on our county's website that anybody can access and get to. It's under the IT section and segues into the GIS section. But basically, it's just a link. It's a website. And the great thing about this portal is that it takes all of our existing layers that we currently have on web logistics right now, and it makes them available for download, which is a really neat functionality that we have because I'll get a lot of requests from college students within the area that are working on projects or just citizens who are, you know, curious about things and wanna do their own analysis and whatnot and play with address points and whatnot. You know, pretty neat stuff. But this is the homepage of it. And it gives you a nice little blurb about, you know, what it is and the data catalog and everything. And then as we scroll down through the applications, we have these nice little, I call it buttons, but they're really just categories. And essentially, we have, I believe it's 54 or 56 layers that are currently on web logistics that we make available. And all those categories or all those layers have been broken into categories for folks to be able to go and look at the information, the statistical kinda attribution behind it. So, for instance, if I wanted to, you know, just look at zoning information or anything like that, I could click on that zoning button or I could search for zoning. And it would take me to, in this case, I clicked on the zoning button, and it'll take me to all the layers that I've, that we have put under, you know, the zoning category. So, for instance, if I just wanna look at the actual zoning layer for the entire county, it gives me the option to click on that and then actually view the data as it loads in. But the nice thing about it is, is I can, you know, besides viewing it from a spatial capacity, I can also view it from a tabular standpoint as well. So, really, the attribution behind it that, you know, that, you know, that's really the important thing, what makes, you know, GIS layers so valuable is you have the spatial component as well as the attribution behind it.
Is that associated with each parcel? Is that the?
It is, it is not. It's just the blank zoning blanket that goes over it.
Okay.
But the nice thing about it is, is, you know, if you want to, this is dynamic enough to where you can zoom in to a particular area. And it's not symbolized. It's not meant to be symbolized in this capacity. It's just meant to show, you know, that hey, there's some information here from a visual standpoint. But it is dynamic, and then I can click around, and it'll give me, you know, particular areas and what their zone. In this case, I clicked on the area that's, you know, zone guard two. But the nice thing about it and what people like about it is that I have the option to download this as a spreadsheet so I can actually view the back end of it, all the attribution signed into it, which, you know, will have some nice information there. And then it'll have the KML download, which is a nice functionality because not everybody can afford high-end GIS software, but everybody can use Google Earth. So, you can download these and view these in Google Earth, which is nice. And then if you do have either custom GIS software or open-source GIS software, such as QGIS, you can download the actual shapefile, which is, you know, what we use to do a lot of our analysis here in the county. So, that's really the backbone in terms of the data repository side of this Open Data Portal. And the nice thing about it is, is, you know, it's, this is all tied into, basically, an essential GIS reader viewpoint so that it's tied to our, you know, main subset of data. So, anytime I go in or, you know, I go in and update the data, this will be automatic in terms of, you know, being up to date and folks not having to wonder, well, I don't know, you know, when this was last updated or things like that. So, that's a very nice functionality in that as well. And then the kind of, the second, the second component of the Open Data Portal itself.
How do you get into that first orange Open Data page?
You, so there is a link on our county's website. It'll take you there. And then the second kinda component of the Open Data Portal is that it also features as a repository for all of our featured applications. So, in the past, you know, we've done the, you know, election polling places application, which we've seen, the election results application, which we saw from 2019. Some of the broadband stuff, you know, was on here. Web logistics is on here. It's a nice place to go for folks or residents to say, hey, what kind of applications that are GIS-centric is the county really offering? And all kind, in a nice one neat place. It gives nice blurs, and you can actually launch straight into some of these, which is pretty cool. So, it's a nice little historical one, you know, pretty neat. But really.
To follow up on Lee's question.
Yeah, I'm looking for it.
I'm looking at the county website. Where is the button for that?
So, if you go to, go to the IT section or the IT department.
Okay, so go under, go to departments and then go to?
Go to IT.
IT.
And then there, there'll be a sidebar that says GIS information.
Okay.
And then there'll be a link at the bottom of the GIS information page. It says something along the lines of click here to access more open data.
Okay, I went all the way to the IT page. Did I go too far? I can't see it now. I got it, I got it.
Okay.
One is bad.
No worries. But really, the, the goal of the Open Data site is to showcase that GIS just isn't a parcel viewer. And in this case, it just isn't web logistics. It also serves as a nice portal that has all of our layers that we choose to make publicly available as well as all of our other applications, the science web logistics, and kind of one nice neat shop. And.
It would seem to me that having to go to the IT department and then down to the IT department, if we were gonna make this visible to everybody, it would all be something right on the front page.
So, and in line with that, I think, we'll transition into my next application. But I would really like for, kinda similar now to how we have a button on the front page that says, you know, click here to access GIS, I'd almost really like to have that button or another button that says click here to access GIS and take you to this page. And then from there, you pick what application you want.
That would work.
That's really what I envisioned this kind of serving as.
Instead of going to the web logistics page?
Correct.
How would you get to the web logistics page?
We would have, and this page is completely customizable. So, if we wanted to, we could have like a blurb or a button here that says, you know, click here to access web logistics. Or in this case, how it's set up. I, at the very bottom of this page, I have, you know, featured application. And you click here to click web logistics here. So, we can play around with that, but ideally, that's kind of what I would like to happen just so we can kinda maybe change the narrative that GIS just, GIS is web logistics, but it's not all it is. It's a small component of it. So, that's, that's really what the Open Data Portal is. And then transitioning to the parcel viewer. This parcel viewer that I'm gonna show you today is essentially what would, in my mind, kind of take the place of what we currently use as web logistics.
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
What is the difference between Lake of Wade Woods' main dam inundations zone and Veterans Dam inundation zone?
They're the same.
That, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, they're one of the same.
But they show. It actually shows two different things.
They show two different things. I, there's probably something I need to check on in terms of, you know, planning from a planning standpoint, but they are two different data sets. The terminology might need to be reworked on that.
Absolutely.
They are the same.
They're the same, and that's why I asked.
A number of years ago, they named the thing the Veterans Dam, and I'm not sure that's gotten into the state's listing of yet or not, but it's called the Veterans Dam.
But they're showing two different data sets in the same dam.
Gotcha. And that could be a case of two where one is from X year and the other's, you know, the following year or something.
Well, which one is right?
Right, and get rid of the other one.
Right. Yeah, we can certainly do that. And that's part of, you know.
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to be on target, but that was.
We just need to stay where we're gonna stay and continue.
That's right. They don't think you just, you know, create.
No, you're completely fine. So, this parcel viewer that I'm gonna show you is actually something that we have created in-house completely using our Esri enterprise licensing, which is super awesome in my opinion. But basically, this is, this is, imagine this is web logistics. It does all the same stuff. It just looks stylistically different. So, and we're, and we're completely, you know, dependent on just only ourselves, which is the nice thing. So, if we wanna do any queries or changes or anything like that, it's, we all do it in-house, and it's, it's pretty nice. So, to start off, you know, we could have our nice little roller beer that has whatever kind of disclaimers or information that we want, and you have to agree to it. And then it, you know, it's gonna send you on to county, which kinda similar to how web logistics is now. But in this case, the nice thing about this is that when you run a search, I have it configured so that it not only searches the address or not only searches the parcels, but it'll search the address points as well if you choose it. See, which is the nice thing.
Would you say it's the search actual word?
Correct. So, and it's, and, you know, it's just to each their own in terms of, you know, what is actually configurable and whatnot and what your style is. But in this case, let's just say, you know, I'm searching for, let's, I'll just use the public safety parcel because I have it written down. But so, when I type in the first of the address numbers here, we can see that it's queried out. It's searching against the address point as well as the parcel address. And I bring that up because a lot of times we'll get some folks calling and you get frustrated because, well, you know, I live at so-and-so address and it's an apartment, or when I search my apartment number, it doesn't come up. Well, the reason it doesn't come up is because the search functionality of web logistics runs against the parcel and not the actual address point. So, unless you own that parcel, you know, you're, you're gonna be, you're gonna have difficult time maneuvering that, which is frustrating for citizens. So, but in this case, we can see as I've typed in, I've got my address point coming up and my parcel address coming up. So, in this point, I'll just click on the parcel. And it'll take me right to it.
So, so if somebody's in an apartment, they can type that, and we're, and we've got their address, and that address is related to the parcel number. So, it's not like the existing GIS where if you don't have a, if you don't own the parcel, you don't, you don't come up.
Correct.
By tying it to, to another database that has everybody's name and address in the county.
Correct, yes, sir. I've got an example. I'll show that.
All right, okay.
But the, the nice thing about it is, is that, you know, and so, here we are. We've got the public safety parcel. It's taken here. And then we've got this nice little sidebar that's come up that's basically the same thing that's on web logistics. It's just, you know, configured a little bit differently that has all our information. And the important thing, which all the citizens wanna see is the property card. So, if I hit the more info link, it'll take me to concise and show me the official property card, which is what people wanna see. So, that's a nice.
There's no new information on the property cards as we exist, as they exist today?
Correct. Yeah, and all the information that you see in the parcels is pulled directly from Concise Cam, the property card itself. So, we have a query on the back end that'll actually update it every week. So, all the information that you see is pulled from the Commissioner's Office. Really, GIS and what our department does is just, you know, we update the record number, which will sync with all the information, and we update parcel geometry. That's the key there. But to go back to your point, Mr. Frame, about if I have, you know, let's say I'm a business, but I don't own the parcel, but I have my address. In this case, I'm gonna search for 32303 Constitution Highway. And we can see I've got an address point coming up, but not a parcel. So, currently in web logistics, in web logistics, if I went and searched for this now, it wouldn't come up because it's, 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 in, in that system's mind, it doesn't exist because it's not a record and parcel. But it is a record and an address point, which is why it shows up here. And we have this configured so that it searches against the parcel and the address point, which, again, apartments, whatnot, it, it helps people out. So, and then we can see here, I'll cut the building off. And then we can see here, it, this was the returning result here, just the point. But ideally, you know, there's, there's no reason why we can't push this out. I'll back up a little bit so you can see it. There's no reason now why we can't push out a product like this in ours versus everything that you see on web logistics. We currently maintain. It's just, we're using that interface as the medium to show it. And this is, you know, an application that we can push up and maintain relatively quickly. It'll do all the same functionality in terms of displaying a legend, letting you print a PDF, giving you measuring capabilities, doing map markup and everything like that. So.
So, if we want somebody to go in there, we don't necessarily want them to go into GIS. We want them to go into this system because of the greater flexibility and the less likely to be frustrated.
And I have this, this isn't publicly available. This application is not. But there's no reason why it can't be because it's all the same layers that we're already using now. It's just more kind of the, hey, this is what we're doing. This is where we would like to go phase. So, but. Yeah, those are. I think you kinda summed it up perfectly, Mr. Frame. In an ideal world, I would like to have the, the, the button or what have you on the front page of the website take you to the Open Data Portal. And then from there, have that, have like a feature thing at the top of the Open Data Portal take you to this parcel.
Well, I mean, as soon as people understand what that is, where they would go, they'd be far more likely to be comfortable with it, especially if you avoid the, avoid the frustrations.
Certainly. So, that would be something that I would like to have then as we transition through summer.
If I enter my name and I don't enter it exactly the way it is, if I don't enter a fact that it's a part of a trust.
Yeah.
It's just nothing.
Yeah.
No record.
Which, you'll still have some of that, but with the added searches, you might be able to alleviate some of that where, hey, this is my address point. As long as that address point is in our system, it'll, it'll be.
Sure.
So, ideally, to wrap up, I would like to transition into that. You know, hopefully, summer, midsummer, and then by September, kind of us be doing that. But yeah.
That's my answer. I guess your parcels are contingent upon what the Commissioner's Office inputs.
Yes, sir.
Is there any way? I guess not, if it's contingent on what they input.
Yeah, 'cause it's all the billing and tax information. So, yeah, how it works now is.
You really, you really want them to be at least the same, even if the, if the Commissioner's Office has got some delays or things like that.
Well, it's not even necessarily delays. I know on a lot of parcels, for tax purposes, they say that there's nothing there.
No.
Right.
Would you be able to address that?
Well, that's some, we, it's yes and no.
Some of, working with them, is that something you could address?
Yeah, it's, and, and we have. It's just kind of that legacy information that you kinda have to do a little record digging and kind of determine why it is what it is, and then make a decision on it. But yeah, we, we have been trying to address that and certainly moving forward. I think, you know, it's, it's a big priority. 'Cause I think technically, right now, we have over 22,000 parcels. And I think there's around, maybe 170 that are just part of like some legacy kind of, you know, you have to do a little bit of fact, then fact checking, and it'll, it'll just all out because there's not a record in place because it's tied to, you know, something. So, and that's something that we're working on. And obviously, you need to clean up as of before. But the nice thing about this is, you know, I've been getting a lot of calls saying, hey, can you help me with this? And we, you know, that's a big part of cleaning up stuff, too. It's just people let us know.
So, if you get, you get very many calls with people saying that I can't find or I've got problems with?
No, no. I mean, every once in a while, it's more, hey, this is my first time logging on. Can you help me? And I'll walk through people with that. But nothing, very rarely I get somebody who can't find something. But, you know, we, we do get very down with it. But that's not my main call. I'll, I'll say that.
I was gonna say, most of those calls probably go to the Commissioner's Office.
Correct.
So, he doesn't.
He can avoid that.
He gets them filtered down.
Yeah, yeah. And usually, they'll be like, hey, like, this parcel's wrong. We just made the update. And then they'll have me basically refresh the connection between GIS and CAMA, which will update the parcels. And then the tabular information will be correct, which is what people, you know, wanna see.
And ultimately, this will tie in with the D books and everything in courthouse if, in fact, those records are correct.
Correct, yes, sir.
Now, that would be interesting.
Yeah, I was gonna ask a question about that. If I, let's say, a new survey is done. It seems to me that at some point in time, it would, it would be beneficial to have these data capture that new survey information. I mean, it, it's public record. It's recorded in the courthouse. And I'm not quite sure what that mechanic, the mechanics that need to look like.
Correct.
Is the, is the stuff at the courthouse sufficiently automated that you can make an interface with support?
Depending on the parcel?
Well, it's searchable now.
Yeah.
Back to about 1983 or 1982, it's over longer than there.
It's searchable. And it's, we could tie it in. It's just, it's, it's a little bit heavier of a lift just because it kind, you start getting to the point of, okay, well, we have to have, store all these electronically, have the storage space for it, tie in, which is a whole nother.
Yeah, it's a whole lot.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Unfortunately, there was some things that were just, once again.
But if we wanted to get to the Winstone Shopping Center kind of thing?
Yeah. Yeah, I certainly wouldn't be opposed to that. I, I love it, so.
It's a powerful tool.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
Good.
That's, that's what I got. Thank you guys for your time. Any other questions for, for Dan?
I'll make a comment. We, we certainly appreciate your, your help in serving some of our, the initiatives that we have throughout the county. As you know, we rely heavily on your addressing capability and to probably those, the streets and the.
Yes.
Households and these kind of things in the county better than almost anyone else.
I'm not waking up at night having dreams about you yet. So, we're not, we're not quite there.
You're not working.
We can get there.
But it's my pleasure. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Next educational session. I'm not sure how much educating you're doing here. Allison, but the Civic Clerk Board Portal.
Sure, I'll do my best. Members of the board, I've briefly introduced you by email to Civic Clerk's Board Portal. And for those that are in the audience or on YouTube that, that don't know, Civic Clerk is the name of our agenda management platform that we are working on launching internally. And it will eventually be our out-facing platform on the website for the public to access Board Supervisors meeting material. And we're working on getting the Planning Commission onboard as well. So, a, a location for the public to access all of our meeting materials. But each of you has a secure login to access Civic Clerk's Board Portal. And so, when you enter your login information, the screen that's in front of you right now is your agenda landing page. So, when you log in, this is what you would first see on your screen. It currently has the April 27th agendas and the May 11th agendas on there as those are the only two that we've published to date. However, as we continue using the Civic Clerk platform, it will build a history of agendas here on the screen.
Will you attempt to take any of the back stuff?
No.
The reason is, is because I go to the, I go to the website and I go look at the agendas for last year because I have something I'm trying to figure. And I click on it, and I'll get the thing. And when I go down to click on the specific item, it takes me right back to the front page, and I don't get to see whatever that item was.
You will get to continue to enjoy them.
Yes.
It needs to work, you know, unlike on the modern web browsers. Allison, I have a stupid question.
And I can do it with this system.
You have no picture of. That's not what mine looks like when it comes in.
It's not what yours looks.
No, it has all the same information. It's in a different configuration. Is that, it's, it's four down.
Okay.
Is that just a? It's auto scaling for the screen you're in.
Okay, okay.
That's fine. I just wanted to make sure.
But do you still have rectangles or squares? Like you can, they're just laid out a little bit differently?
Do it short and fat a little bit.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I just wanted to make sure that I was doing things correctly.
I think so.
Okay. I mean, I can get on all the stuff. It's not, not a problem. I just.
Yours just looks a little bit differently. Has anyone else logged on yet?
Yeah. I, I was looking for a specific piece today and was able to pull it off of this.
Good, and it could be PC versus iPad viewing difference.
Okay, that, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that I was sent right, please.
So, you should land at this screen. And, Mr. Frame, before I answered so quickly, I thought your question was, are we gonna take back anything? Because I know you were, you know, there's a desire to have a history. You know, but we can work on building out more of a history on the, on the public platform.
I'm not sure I want everybody to spend a lot of time doing this just so I can find it. And I have, it was two years ago. But, and actually, I've got a laptop that does do it, but I normally keep that laptop put away. And I have to break that out if I wanna go find a particular piece.
Well, and one thing that I previously shared was the Agenda Center, which is Civic Plus's terminology that we use for you all to access your agenda or the public to access the agenda now, works best in Internet Explorer. And as we know, that is an outdated browser. One of the nice things about this new technology is that it is supported in Chrome and Edge, which are, are the updated browsers. So.
But the other browsers can't get in through the agenda on the website then?
Because the links, the way that we currently linked the board's agenda, it won't work in anything other than Internet Explorer. So. Yes, but you'll, you'll get to this landing page. And right now, you'll see the, the work session and regular meetings for April 27th and May 11th, but it will build out as we publish more meetings. So, I wanna go over, there are three ways that you can view your agenda and your meeting, your associated meeting materials. The first of which is directly in the Board Portal. So, I'm gonna use tonight's regular meeting as our example. So, you would click on the item for the regular meeting for May 11th. And this is the first way to view your agenda. And again, it's directly in the Board Portal. And just to distinguish between the Board Portal and Public Portal, as members of the board, you have a secure login where you can access the information. If we chose to share confidential attachments for closed meeting, only you would have access to them. And you can also annotate your agendas and take notes to help you remember, hey, I need to ask this question at the meeting or remind me to bring this up at the meeting. But the public will see the, the meeting materials the way that you see them here, too. So, the first way to view it is by clicking on that tile, and you will see the outline of tonight's agenda with all of the individual agenda items. If you, for example, want to look at the public hearing. If you, for example, want to look at the public hearing for this evening, which is our SGP twenty-one oh one P lock processing, you would simply scroll to that agenda item, click on that agenda item using the cursor and you can see all of the attachments associated with that agenda item. One thing you've probably noticed over the last two months is that we've implemented a new format for cover memos. So we have a template for just a standard cover memo and then we have a template for agenda item reports that have a background discussion, financial impact and recommendation header as a means of concisely presenting information to the board for all agenda items. So your agenda item attachments will start out with that cover and then it will have all of the attachments listed in order following that cover memo. So by clicking on the agenda item on that initial outline, you can see all of the attachments. We did choose to upload the attachments as individual items instead of one large PDF file. That way, if you want to quickly look at one item, you can discern, you know, what you're looking at without having to scroll through a thirty-five page PDF. As an example, on the public hearing, if you wanted to quickly look at the application materials, it's one click to get you directly to the application materials versus scrolling through all of the pages that appear before that. So by clicking on attachment, application materials, it will pull that up on your screen and you can see the PDF there, just our, our cover sheet and then all of the application materials will follow that. And then a quick click on the back button will take you back to the landing page for that agenda item. And then if you use the blue button in the upper left-hand corner, that will take you from the single agenda item back to the entire agenda outline so that you can either browse to the next agenda item or go back and look at something else specific. So this is the first way for you to access and look at your agenda. Before I move to the second way, I want to highlight the notes functionality. So just going back to that public hearing that we had just looked at, when you get to that individual item page and you see your attachments on the left, when you scroll down, you will see a note section. So if, for example, there's a condition on the proposed ordinance that I know one of the conditions on this is, you know, there will be no more than twenty-five animals slaughtered per week. You know, if you are reviewing your agenda materials and that triggers a question for you, you can go down to the note screen and type, you know, how was the number of animals determined?
Is that information you put in there, foable?
I will have to defer to the county attorney. I think there's an exemption for working papers.
Just curious, because if I put it down here and then I shred the thing when I'm done.
Right, I, I think there's an exemption for working papers in the code of Virginia. But I will absolutely check with Tom and share that information with you so that you know how to handle.
So, no, can any other board member get an individual's notes?
No, sir, not from the login. I, I do need to get the FOIA question answered for you. And I'll, I'll share Tom's response, but when you are logged in, those are notes under your login and they wouldn't be shared with any other user. So I have a question, I'm reviewing my materials and I want to know about the number of animals. So I go to notes, I typed it, it saves automatically. So now during the meeting, when I am review or following along with the meeting materials and we get to the public hearing this evening and I click on it, I, I can see my note down there and it's, you know, a place for you to keep all of your notes and thoughts and questions as you're, as you're doing your packet review. So does anyone have any question about this particular format?
Once I start building up the database of this, is it gonna be searchable?
It is, yes.
So if I said somewhere six months ago, we had a, a item on a particular special use or a particular decision we made, so I'd be able to go and search and find that?
I believe in the minutes, once we start uploading them, the minutes are gonna be easier to search and find that terminology and then you would be able to go to the corresponding agenda.
Okay.
Versus doing a search in the actual packets.
All of the specifics of the, of the agenda, all the specific pages of the agenda?
Right.
Okay. Alright, that, that'd work.
Let me look into that a little bit further for you though. So that's, that's method one. The second way is from the landing page, selecting the agenda that you want to look at. Again, it's tonight's regular meeting agenda. And at the top, you'll see a link that says Agenda. When you click that, it will simply take you to the one or two-page agenda for tonight's meeting so that you have just an overview of what's on the evening's agenda. And then the second meeting, or the, sorry, the second button here is for Packet. So if you click on Packet, it will take you to a view that you, you know, might be more familiar with. And it's just a solid PDF document with the agenda as the front page and all of the agenda item materials in order.
But, but you don't have a, a link on the agenda page for this, this version?
No, sir, not on this version. And you also cannot click on your attachments individually. It's just as if you were receiving, yes, a stack of paper. They are, the agenda is on top and all of the agenda item materials are in order behind it. If this is the functionality that you like, you can view it from this screen. And in the upper left corner, there is a search button. You can click search and it will look through the entire document for you for a term. And if you click the button.
Looking just at this particular meeting?
Yes, sir, just at this particular meeting. And next to the search button is an annotate button. And this might be a little bit easier on, you know, an iPad or something, a touchscreen. But there are some drawing tools where you can draw arrows, lines, shapes. You can freehand, you can write on the PDF, you can highlight text. And the annotations that you make on this, on this file will stay there when you bring it back up.
You can do that with the first method too.
With the first method, I don't think you have the annotate button. No, you're right, you do. Yes, sir. So when you click on the individual PDF, the same functionality is there. You have the search feature and you have annotate. So if you didn't want to use the notes field at the bottom and you click on that attachment, you can annotate directly on, on that screen as well.
Different colors, shapes.
Shapes, arrows, lines, highlights, freehand. There's a number of, of different ways that you can mark up the agenda packet there. So that's the second way, by clicking on the packet button. And again, it's just like getting one stack of paper, it's all there in order. You can flip through it, search, annotate. The third way is from this same screen, but over in the upper right-hand corner, there's a download button, which is an arrow pointing down. And if you click that, you want to download it as the original document. And click download. I, I want to know if you have made annotations on there and you checked this box, anything that you've written or any freehand, any highlights, any markups that you've made will also download into your PDF. If you want it as a clean packet without your notes, you can uncheck the box. So you hit the download button and it's creating the file for you. And just like you would download any other file, it's gonna show up in your download bar at the bottom. It may be different on iPad than the view that you have here on PC, but when it finishes downloading, it will be available for you. And when you click and open, I want to open it. I want to open it as a PDF. Instead of in the web browser, so I'm gonna. Okay, so if you open it in Adobe, you will have what is similar to the view that you just looked at, except when you download the file. Well, I'm sorry, this is just Reader, so I don't, it's not having all of my, all of my bookmarks on here, unless I'm just overlooking it.
This is something we can play with and learn, correct?
It is, it is, yes. Are you all familiar with bookmarks in a PDF document? I don't know where bookmarks are on here, so that's not, not doing me my practice from my computer earlier.
We can practice on what we currently have and it's not going to hurt a thing, right?
Absolutely, it's nothing that you. Nothing that you do in your login is, is going to mess anything up. But I did want to highlight, if you choose the download functionality, every single agenda item has its own bookmark. So even though you do not have the hyperlinks from the homepage from the agenda that you are used to, if you bring up the Bookmarks tab on the left-hand side of the screen, it has an outline of the agenda and every agenda item has its own bookmark and each of the attachments associated with that agenda item have their own bookmark. So you can easily navigate through the agenda by using those bookmarks without having to scroll all the way back to the, the beginning, see where you are on the agenda. It does have in, in the bookmarks, an outline of the agenda and you can browse through it that way. And then if you have any, any of the features that you have in your Adobe, this is Adobe Reader, so it's, it's very basic. You probably have a more advanced version on either your laptop or a PDF viewer that you have on your iPad. But any of those functionalities in your PDF viewer, you would be able to use for the downloaded version. So maybe not all of the annotations and, and the note keeping from the first two versions, but if this is something that you're more familiar with or more comfortable with, you can download it and use the bookmarks to, to follow through the agenda.
Then you don't have to have connectivity.
Correct.
Because you'll have it on your, on your laptop or device even without Wi-Fi working.
Correct. And if you went through and did all of your annotations and highlighted what you wanted and connectivity is an issue, then you can download that file with all of your markups on it and bring it up in the board meeting without, without having any, any worries for your Wi-Fi connection.
You're still, you're trying to push me away from my paper, aren't you?
You know?
Maximum flexibility.
Exactly, maximum flexibility and, you know, the Board of Supervisors established a digital citizen priority and.
This is fine, this is.
Yes, we're hoping that.
As long as I get my paper for the next two and a half years.
Duly noted.
But, but even in regard to that, when this tool makes that easier because we go to that single PDF file and just go print.
Yes.
It spits it out at the end, hole punch, here you go.
Yes.
As opposed to making each item and having to keep adding it. So it, it helps in every respect.
Sure, that's fine, yeah. And, and I really like the idea of being able to search.
I do, I do want to check on that functionality for you. I know it's, it's there in each individual agenda and I believe it's there.
But if I go to the first, if I could just say, search, I want to, we did something on the, the blue building and I want to be able to search anything and call and say, yeah, we had a meeting here and ended, you know, whether I did it on the, when it shows up in the, in the minutes or, and then I can link it to the agenda, that'd be fine. But just being able to say, okay, we discussed it four times in the last two years.
Okay, so from your landing page, and Jim, are you, are you all still on the landing screen, the homepage of the agendas?
I am now, yes.
Up in, up next to your name, in the upper right-hand corner, there is a magnifying glass.
Yes, and sometimes it helps me and sometimes it's real cans.
And that will take you to the search screen. And if you hit the search button, you can enter a keyword and search by a date range. So I'm gonna search by the gentleman's last name. No, you won't be able to search back that far yet. But if we go back to April fir, capture all of April through May. And I search for the gentleman's last name because I knew that was gonna come up for the public hearing tonight and I hit search, it's telling me that there's one result and there's an agenda item with his name and it tells me that it's an action item that was scheduled for the regular meeting on May eleventh and I can click on that search result and it will take me directly to, to that agenda item. So from search, you can search meetings, items, notes. If you have your notes in there and you want to search for a term in your notes, it will come up there. Something that you've bookmarked, so there is a search functionality on the agenda screen as well.
Thank you, Allison.
You're welcome.
Any comments or questions for Tom then?
I already used it this afternoon or this morning, I found it useful.
Good.
Thank you very much.
Glad to hear that, and I'll get an answer on the FOIA question.
It's out, oh.
Yeah, oh, the answer's out in the hallway.
That's right.
Alright.
He's shaking, he said no.
I'm gonna go to Germany work session and pick up the meeting in about five minutes.
Perfect, thank you.
I'm gonna send it over to late prints.
Cole, can you pause the meeting for us, please?
Great, good, nice. How'd it work? I guess we should look at it maybe in what, in note. How'd you work? I guess we should look at it maybe in what are your notes?
We do have a framed copy down here and the sheriff is here to receive it.
Okay, I just assumed you'd go down.
Yes, absolutely.
Yes, I prefer that to sitting up here if I could get the sheriff up here. And if I can make it through this.
You don't mind taking my mask off?
No. If I can read through this properly, I certainly presume my duty, sir. Proclamation to recognize the week of May ninth through fifteenth, twenty twenty one, as National Police Week and May fifteenth, twenty one, twenty twenty one, as National Peace Officers Memorial Day. Our virtue of the authority vested in Orange County Board of Supervisors, we hereby recognize the week of May ninth through fifteenth, twenty twenty one, as National Police Week and May fifteenth, twenty twenty one, as National Peace Officers Memorial Day in Orange County, Virginia. Whereas, in nineteen sixty-two, President John Kennedy signed the first proclamation recognizing every May fifteenth as Peace Officers Memorial Day. And the week in which it falls is National Police Week. And whereas, police officers throughout the Commonwealth work tirelessly to protect and serve its citizens, enforce its laws, and keep its neighborhood, schools, and families safe. And whereas, police officers report for duty aware of the sacrifices they may be called upon to make and risk their lives each day and every day in order to safeguard the public and enforce the laws of the Commonwealth. And whereas, law enforcement agencies play a crucial role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of all citizens, and it is important for citizens to know and understand the duties and responsibilities police departments and members of law enforcement agencies. And whereas, members of law enforcement agencies unceasingly provide a vital public service to the communities in which they serve. And whereas, we reflect upon the selfless dedication and bravery for our local, state, and other public sector police as their safety and well-being are promoted by their devotion to maintaining peace and security in our communities. And whereas, National Police Week and National Peace Officers Memorial Day are opportunities to honor officers, both past and present, to commemorate those who have fallen in the line of duty and to recognize the contributions and sacrifices made by the families of those officers and the families of those who continue to protect and serve our community. Now, therefore, it be proclaimed on this eleventh day of May, twenty twenty one, that the Orange County Board of Supervisors hereby recognize this week of May ninth through fifteenth, twenty twenty one, as National Police Week and May fifteenth, twenty twenty one, as National Peace Officers Memorial Day. And calls these observances to the Orange County community to both increase awareness of law enforcement and the service provided to the community and to honor the courageous officers who have lost their lives or have become disabled while serving in line of duty. Signed and sealed this eleventh day of May, twenty twenty one, James V. Crozier, Chairman, Orange County Board of Supervisors. Sheriff, thank you for everything you and your staff do for our county, protecting our citizens and answering calls in a very positive, community way.
Thanks.
Truly appreciate it.
This means a lot that our local government has done this. I'll leave out the rest.
Thank you very much.
That's nice, Derek.
Yep.
Next is presentation from the Orange Workforce Center, Marty Baldwin.
Yes, sir.
So I'm not Marty Baldwin. Marty is a pretty one in the back. He'll be up there in a second, but I'm Dave Fillmore from Virginia Career Works Piedmont Region. I'm going to give you a little bit of intro that truly talks about the structure of workforce development in our career centers within the region. Marty's going to talk to you then about how that applies to Orange County specifically and answer some of the questions you've been asked. So our mission, well, we really want a fifteen workforce boards in the state where we're responsible for addressing the workforce needs and total workforce needs within the region. Specifically, we're responsible for supporting businesses and making sure they have the skill pipeline that they need, but also supporting the job seekers as they're looking for employment. We now have a diversity, equity, inclusion statement. We think that's becoming more and more critical, particularly for us because we have access to a lot of people that are within communities that have needs. So we think we've got a unique opportunity to support those people, make sure those needs are met, support the businesses, and helping the businesses deal with specific problems. We are called Local Workforce Development Area Six and includes ten counties that are on this chart, plus the city of Charlottesville. Within that, it's broken down into planning District Nine and District Ten. Orange is in Plan District Nine, so we'll focus on that today. It's a fairly large region. I actually think it's the largest workforce development region by area in the state. So it covers an awful lot of land, a few urban areas, but mostly rural. And that presents a unique challenge. I want to talk a little bit about our one-stop delivery system and the centers that we have because we have three different types of centers. Every workforce development area has to have one regional comprehensive center. Ours is in Charlottesville, and that's really based on population. It just makes sense to put the one comprehensive center within Charlottesville. The comprehensive center has all the partners either co-located or within a very short distance from us. Okay? And it is the regional office for the employment commission. That's important because we've got one space and they share the costs. So the way we fund this is through Virginia Career Works Piedmont Region. But our partners that are co-located, even with us, also co-fund that location. That becomes important a bit later. And we are funded as VCWP Piedmont through federal, state, and local fund. So it's not one source only. It's all three sources. We also have two affiliate centers, one in Culpeper, which Marty resides in. And Marty and his staff, there are actually four, four Weola representatives there, right? So caseworkers or career counselors. And they're supporting the entire PD nine region. We also have what we call a resource center specialist in that location. Now, that location is partially funded by Rappahanna Goodwill and by VCWP Piedmont. So in some ways, the costs are split. It's a little bit of a unique arrangement. I'm very thankful for the partnership with Rappahanna Goodwill, but it allows us to keep that center open and support the entire region. We also have the Orange Center, which you're very familiar with, where we have a resource center specialist. We actually have a temperature taken out as well, which new dislocated worker grant on the state. But that resource center specialist that's sitting in the Orange County office across the street really brings people in, does the intake process, and then refers them to the Weola specialists or to other services that they need. So they've got full access to our services, and they're open Tuesday through Thursday. The funding there is split between Orange County, very kind to provide facility income, and they're also providing funds for their resource center specialists. The balance of the support costs comes from VCWP Piedmont and Rappahanna Goodwill. And then there are three satellite centers, one in Alvermore, one in downtown Charlottesville, and one in Orange. We don't have a lot of contact with them unless they request them. So they're really running standalone centers for job seekers, workers, and businesses. I will say that the Alvermore Center is moving now towards becoming an affiliate. We're actually going to start the certification process now, and we're using Orange County as the model. Because I think you have the right model for affiliate centers that are really going to support job seekers or businesses with a resource center special. Not necessarily the full blown of the stat, but those centers can be the conduit. Those satellite centers can be the conduit. All of those satellite centers are funded by the city or county that we work with. So there's no additional funding. We certainly support it when it's appropriate, but we aren't providing funding for that. So why is all that important? Well, we did some research recently and looked at our constituents served. And quite frankly, I think this is a great success story for Orange County. What we learned at PD nine is ninety-three percent of them served in person who go into a center for support, career support, resume writing, whatever happens, ninety-three percent of those actually have career centers in them. So if you look at the charts, Culpeper and Orange and Falkland County are dominating that mix. We're supporting almost nobody from Madison and Rappahanna. And we believe that's because of location. We don't think people are going to drive forty-five minutes, an hour and a half to go to a career center. It's just not going to occur. We've also did some work because people said, okay, well, it's probably happening virtually. We don't believe that's the case either. We believe a lot of job seekers don't have access to it because they're not going to have the tools or training they need to access these local workforce. We saw the same thing in PD ten where Alvermore and Charlottesville were dominating the services that we're providing. And again, we believe a lot of that's location. We've actually used that data to apply for Virginia Grant. We're about halfway through the process. We're going to create, we're going to try to create a mobile caseworker system. Some counties like Nelson, Louvana, Madison, et cetera, will provide space and provide support. And we'll actually have a VCWP Piedmont representative, a resource center specialist onsite one day a week in those locations and conducting job fairs in those counties. So again, we're using Orange County as a model for that work because we believe that it's a model that's proven to be very successful. Marty's going to talk now about some of the Orange County data. Don't get your questions ready.
Real quick question, please, Sheriff. Do you have a breakdown by area or county that supports the Orange Workforce Center? As far as coming in?
We have a breakdown by people that enroll in the workforce program, the WA program.
Yeah, I think you're talking, she's talking about the, I think, not all the counties are provided.
Well, I'm actually talking about from a geographic perspective.
Like, I did code or?
I did code.
What we ask is just which county.
Okay.
We could probably data mine that, but we don't have it available today.
Okay, well, there's a very specific reason I ask about that. Is we have people in the town of Orange, close to it, town of Gordonville, and people at the eastern end of the county. And I'm inclined to think that you're not capturing our entire counties. I think you're inclined to think that you're capturing County of Orange area, Gordonville area. I was just curious, maybe you had any data to back it up or?
I don't think we have data, but I believe you're correct based on what we're seeing and the data we have with that. The further away you get from the career center and the more rural you get into an area, the less likely people are first to know about us and second to take advantage of the services they were offering either because of transportation or other topics. So we're pretty convinced now going forward, we have to take the message to the people and not sit in offices and hope that they come to us. So this is the entire philosophy of this Georgia Grant. I'm going to try to change the model to get closer to the constituency.
So I wanted to give you a little information specifically about the Orange Center, some data. So workforce development is big in the news these days with the shock from COVID. Workforce development really is listening to the demand from businesses and supplying the labor that those businesses need. So it's making that connection. And so I think Orange County is to be commended for the last six years making an investment in infrastructure to respond in such a workforce crisis as now. So I want to give you a little historical context, a three-year look back of the impact from the Orange Workforce Center. And you can see the first graph you have is the number of people that have come through the center here in Orange on Bellevue Avenue. We average about fifty job seekers a month. It is part-time, so it's three days a week facility. You can see the outliers there, the Orange, which was from last spring, from March, April, and May, the huge spike. One month was over three hundred folks served a month, primarily for unemployment when everything shut down and unemployment shot up so high. As far as, we do track very carefully job placements because that is the data that matters to businesses and to people, to people's lives. So over the same timeframe, we've tracked two hundred and twenty-five job placements, and then we broke them down in this pie chart about industry. And you can see that forty-five percent were in manufacturing and warehouse jobs. We're very happy about that with the composition of industry in Orange that's reflective of the needs for businesses that are out there. The other two major industries were wholesale retail and services. Services also encompasses healthcare in this breakdown. And then one of the great advantages of partnering with Virginia Career Works is you get the support of the other four members of the workforce team, also direct access for your constituents to workforce funding to pay for tuition for credentials. So we've seen thirty-two Orange County residents get credentials. You see the breakdown there. The majority are pursuing careers in healthcare, then pursuing personal care, served by nursing assistant, clinical medical assistant, lobotomy credentials, followed by CDL license, CDL A and D. Those are paid for through our grant. So those thirty-two credentials represent forty-seven thousand dollars worth of tuition that Virginia Career Works has paid on behalf of Orange County residents. I think this is really interesting. This is a three-year look at the reason that people would visit the Career Works Center in Orange. So two years ago, it served sort of as a baseline. And you can see that the majority of folks came either to do job search, they're applying for jobs, or to meet with partner programs. Data listed some of those partners, adult ed, disabilities sources, EDC, the Orange DSS, all operated out of an office and said there's partner meetings. So the majority were for job search or meeting with partner programs. Last year, you can see what a disruptor it was. Fifty-three percent of the visits services were for unemployment, followed by job search. And then this year is our recovery year responding to that impact. And we really pivoted to create opportunities to connect job seekers with job opportunities. So most folks are utilizing the center for job data or some job search services. Again, this is a list that I will read to you, but the ways that we reach out to folks that are unemployed in the county, the ways that we connect with businesses to hear what their needs are through partnerships through the county, regional development, and then how we connect those two together. Every person in the county who does file for unemployment receives an introduction email about the services at the center. We know the email's not enough, so our resource specialist then provides a phone call to tell people where we're located, how they can come in, what we can provide, how they can access the grants to pay for training and career switches. And then there's other outreach that's done through social media to provide updates about who's hiring and events that are coming up. And then just one final. I think to respond to the misalignment between labor supply and demand, it's going to take a lot of creative efforts to reconnect those pieces. And I think it's going to be some small initiatives that will build because each person is different. Each person that we see looking for work has certain circumstances. Each company's different. One example is a project we did last year, connecting Orange County high school students to career pathways in manufacturing, working with FM Expressions to do an internship while our staff did job readiness work with the students so that they could explore the possibility of a career manufacturing. I think it's those kind of initiatives that are going to move this forward. I know we're short on time. Are there any questions?
Can you give an example of a success story?
Yeah, no, I appreciate that question. So we had an Orange County resident who came who was last year. She was working a minimum wage job, had five kids. And obviously, minimum wage isn't going to support the family. The MIT living wage calculator says in our area, an individual just with one kid, one parent with one kid, needs to make twenty-six dollars an hour to pay all expenses. So she needed some help, so we were able to pay for her to get her PCA and her CNA license to go into healthcare. She got a pay raise, started working here in the county, but still needed some more income and wanted to advance in her career pandemic kit. And we were able to connect her with a job doing contact tracing, where she actually tripled her salary. So now she's using her healthcare training, helping people in the community, and able to support her family.
What's the timeframe when you first visit or?
Yeah, that's a great question. So when folks go into training or enroll in that workforce program, it usually takes between six and eighteen months. Once they get a job, we stay in touch with them for twelve months to make sure they got everything in place.
What is the primary source of funds for the training and the support?
Yeah, so it's ultimately from the Department of Labor, the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. It comes down to the state and the workforce development boards.
Could you give us a little insight on what you're working on in Virginia?
So I can. So we've done two things. We've got to go to Virginia and grant now. It's called Project Reconnect, and we're really trying to reach out to job seekers. So as they're coming into the system, we're reaching out to them via email or coordinating job fairs and help campaigns for that. We've also created a job seeker toolkit that gives them access to the tools they need to find jobs. You can go to LinkedIn if you're an executive or a skilled person. You're not going to use LinkedIn if you're looking for an internal position, but there are twelve to fifteen ways to help them find jobs, to get them access to that. We're also right in the middle now creating an employer toolkit, which is matching the career pathways to employers. As an example, if you're in hospitality, or if you're in tourism, or if you're in lightning fashion, there are certain programs within CTE programs, within accountings, within community colleges that are local, adult education, that will set you up for a career in those specific sectors. So we're really working hard now to identify those sectors. We've got six within the region. Imagine in Orange, you're probably covering all six of them. And we're trying to align the employers with the education communities and the career pathways so we can bring those together, which creates internships, apprenticeships, and opportunities for employment that people may not know about. That's the one we have today. Going forward, we're applying for a new Go Virginia grant, which I described earlier. Based on the data that we showed you, we think we're not accessing those in the rural communities that do not have career centers and are underserved. We have to find a way to take people to those counties. Even if it's within your county, but the outskirts of your county, we have to find a way to get resourced up to them. The way we're structured today, we can only sit in the centers that we describe because we just don't have the resources or the structure in place. What we're asking Go Virginia to help us support is with any kind of contributions from those rural counties for facility space and for support, we're going to provide what we call a mobile career specialist or resource center specialist that can travel to those counties, work with the employees for job fairs, but also work with job seekers to make sure that we're providing face-to-face support. We believe it's so crucial to be face-to-face with job seekers, particularly for individuals that are so difficult to find right now. And that's what we're hoping we get from the Go Virginia grant.
What is the dollar value of these two grants?
So the dollar value for the first grant was about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, a hundred and forty thousand dollars, almost a hundred thousand from the state. Matched fifty percent for the localities. The grant we just applied for is a hundred and fifty thousand from the state and seventy-five thousand matched with the county, so about two twenty-five percent.
This is split between both PD nine and ten, or is that PD nine?
So, no, it's split between PD nine and PD ten. So it comes out of locality funding. On some bases, the Workforce Innovation Opportunities have funding as well, if it can be applied. But it would be split among the eleven localities, not one or two.
A couple of comments on the information. On page eight, you've got some graphs there, but they seem incomplete today. You've got approximately fifty visits per month. But it looks like locality is considerably more than fifty visits per month. And it seems like we could have been given an exact amount there, if that would have been helpful. And then your next graph is a pie chart. It's two hundred and twenty-five job placements, but it doesn't give any other information. It just says two hundred and twenty-five job placements. Are they two hundred and twenty-five job placements in the last three years?
That's correct.
Okay. So if you've got fifty visits per month, that's, let's just branch through the fifty visits, even though it appears to me to be probably closer to seventy-five, if not more. That would be six hundred a year or eighteen hundred over the three-year period. And you've got two hundred and twenty-five job placements. And that's a twelve and a half percent success rate. That doesn't seem very impressive to me. And so I'd like to know, what are we, what are we planning to do different this coming year to get that twelve and a half percent up to maybe twenty percent?
No, that's a great analysis and good math there. It's, so there's a couple things at play. Way above what the state average is as far as jobs and visits. The other part we didn't have in there, the visits, we have, we often work with folks that need multiple visits. So they'll come in multiple times for multiple months in a row. Each person gets an individual employment plan, which means if I need support getting my GED, that might be set one. I need some supports for childcare, transportation, housing. So we're working along all those things at the same time as employment. Our sweet spot is working with folks that have significant barriers to employment, like those things that I just mentioned. So sometimes those take multiple visits.
Well, this is envisioned as workforce development. So the primary idea here is to get people who are looking for work into work. Is that correct? So if in these fifty visits, this is a lot of sort of repeat business, then I think that's important. So that makes that graph even less valuable to me. We need, I need some good metrics here that say this number of people come in in a particular period. And obviously, you're not going to instantaneously find employment, but should be within a reasonable period of time, sixty days, ninety days, or else it should count. I mean,
Yeah.
Because, and then, you know, the job placements and credentials are, can be placed in some type of context that's worthwhile. But as you presented it here, you know, I have no idea.
Okay, fair enough.
What, Mark? What kind of, I'm trying to, since I might have some influence on this. In terms of a metric, we're saying, okay, I've got somebody who's come in and he's been there three or four times for different aspects of it. Did he get a job? Did he get a job in Orange County? Did he get a job somewhere else? So maybe a little more detailed follow-up on the success of the process as opposed to just numbers?
Well, first of all, you know, I kind of like just numbers, but they need to be numbers that actually mean something. I can look at them and say, okay, you know, I know what this means. These are just kind of pretty charts that didn't, you know, really, didn't really help me to understand. If our, if our primary focus is to get people in the workforce, then there should be metrics that let us know how we're doing.
Yeah, so.
And, and so, you know, if we, you know, some of these two hundred and twenty-five jobs theoretically, they can be repeats. You could get someone who perhaps on paper looks very employable. And so you're able to get them five jobs in a year's time. I'm theorizing, I don't know, but I would imagine that could happen. But how long do these people, or how well do these things take? What do we really accomplish? If we get a job for somebody and then thirty days later, they're unemployed again, we haven't really accomplished anything. And it's not necessarily, I'm not blaming you all for them not working longer than thirty days. But that's important information for this board to have in terms of evaluating whether this is a program that suits our needs.
So I can share a little more data with you, and then we can provide you with more concrete information later. We have, we have monthly KPI metrics that are based on state goals for workforce development within the region and within the district. Within PD9, we're exceeding those goals for adult dislocated workers and youth. So that's based on what's expected within the state and statistical analysis of what's occurring within the state. And I'll tell you that the results in our region are very strong compared to other regions within the state. And they're exceeding the state goals for this year, even with the pandemic. So I'm confident that we have a lot of the metrics and KPI you're talking about. We did not include them in this presentation for brevity. We're happy to provide them strategically.
We've got Marty's monthly report. You know, he said the number of center hires for the businesses was five in the last couple of months. Five in April, five in March, and the number of people, of businesses that were served. But in terms of saying, okay, getting back to your question, was this guy hired for a temporary job? Would we, did we, this was a guy who came in, had no skills, we got him the skills, and he now has a job making $35,000 a year, something like that. I mean, that's, and I know that gets at trying to individualize that. But I think we need maybe some more statistics that approach it that way and trying to do that. So I'm with Mark on that one. Try to make some statistics a little more meaningful. And I'll brainstorm with you a couple of times to see what you want to see here. But also ask the council and the board to see what we can come up with that, you know. Now, I know you've had some examples that you've used in the last few months in terms of this person needed this and got this, this, and this, and ended up with a pretty good job. But those are one-offs, and try to build a little more statistical assessment of that way. So I think we can try to do that.
The other side of this, I'd like to see some more information about the business side. What are you seeing in the way of requests? You know, if I take your 225 over the last three years, and that's about 70 per year that you've offered. Well, that might be a good number. If you had 90 requests, then you're doing really well. If you had 900 requests, then the business need is not being fully met. You're not responsible for every hire that they need to make, obviously. But it would be nice to see some metric on the success you're having in terms of meeting the overall need from the standpoint of the businesses themselves.
Yeah, if you hit ballpark, how many jobs are available here in Orange County?
I can tell you from, so a couple of things along that. One, demand is definitely outpacing supply locally and nationally at a time where, we had a job fair 10 days ago here at Booster Park. We had 16 local businesses from Orange, 47 job seekers come. From those 16 businesses, I easily counted over 200 job openings. So demand is definitely beyond supply right now. Especially for entry-level, lower wage, higher labor positions. So whether that's manufacturing, light manufacturing, greenhouse, construction, those are the openings that are available, and there's just not as many people there to fill it.
We're seeing in every region of the state and nationally, I heard a statistic earlier, there are 8100, sorry, there, 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 8100 jobs open, 8200 job seekers within an expanded region, and they don't match. Because people are looking for entry-level workers and they can't find them. What's happened is a lot of entry-level workers pivoted in one another industries, particularly hospitality. We're running into that across the region right now. Light manufacturing is getting killed right now because they can't find the entry-level workers that they need, and they're not out there. Probably we believe it's related to people pivoting into new careers when the pandemic hit. But it's also related to the unemployment insurance, the $300 extra. People are making $17 to $18 an hour now, not working. When you're offering a $14, $15 an hour at the high-end entry-level job, that's really going to hurt, that's really going to hurt supply. So we absolutely know within Orange, within the region, and within the state and nationally, there are more jobs available today than there are job seekers. There's no doubt that's the case, and we hear about it every day.
So the hourly equivalent of not working is $17 an hour, roughly?
And so another piece of that, as spoke to Orange Manufacturer Today, they're increasing their wage to be more competitive to try to capture those entry-level places. I'll welcome Mr. Johnson, Mr. Frame, if there's any specific data points you want us to track on the monthly report that I send the board.
I think we need to do a little brainstorming in terms of just what would be meaningful in terms of what we're accomplishing. I'm looking at like, over the last number of months, you had 81 numbers of employers served, and then 27 numbers of center hires. And where do those two correlate? Is that 27 out of 81? Or did we have some other help to an employer that we served that wasn't necessarily related to a job, but maybe helping them to define their, what their requirements were, or what their attitude looked like, things like that? So I think there's some stuff to be done with that.
And there are spreadsheets behind the spreadsheet, so there's more information you need.
Well, and that's why I say maybe we can break that down. But understanding it from Mark's standpoint, I think he's got a good point.
Let me just follow up on something you just said. You talked about the 8100 jobs, I think it was, and 8200 people looking for jobs, or vice versa. Even 8200 jobs.
It's a one-to-one ratio in the nation, the state, and region, right?
And I understand it's the same way here in Orange County, from what I've heard. And then you went on to mention the people who make $17 an hour sitting home. Are those people, are they included in the 8,000 people who are unemployed?
Yes.
So do we have a way of figuring out actually how many people we have who are unemployed and looking for work?
Yeah, so I looked at the numbers this morning. So Orange County unemployment rate is 4.9, which is better than the state average. About 1.2 point better than the national average. I mean, there's 814 people in Orange County that are unemployed right now. Before the pandemic, it was 490. So, you know, less than 400 folks, that's something we can tackle.
But are they, those 814, are they just people who are maybe collecting unemployment benefits? Or are they 814 people who are actually looking for work?
So starting in two weeks, everybody collecting unemployment will have to submit two jobs that they've applied for every week.
And that's been something we haven't had to do before for quite a while.
That's correct.
So the 814, we don't have any way of, I thought there was a point at which if people stopped looking, they dropped off the unemployment rolls.
That's right. Yeah, they dropped out of the labor force participation, right? Because 814.
So those people, are they, they're not part of the 814 that you're talking about?
But also because of the other barriers, childcare, schools not being open. There's certainly childcare issues, there are transportation issues that have been in Orange for a while, right? That is not the only barrier, but it is a barrier. We think it's going to change when the farmers who look for work begins at the end of May. But it's probably not, at least most analysis I've seen said that's not going to make a huge difference. What's really going to make a huge difference is when the federal government stops giving the additional $300 unemployment insurance, which now is slated for September. So we think there will be a bump from, there will be more job seekers starting at the end of May. But at least conditional wisdom now is that that will really take a step up in September. Or if states decide to stop accepting unemployment, it would start with states stopping in the last two percent.
So I've got 800 jobs, 800 job seekers, but trying to find a match to any one of those 814 that can match in terms of whether the wages are enough, whether the skills are enough, whether the childcare is enough, or whether transportation is enough. All of those things, trying to match those is what the, is where we're running into the challenges.
But it sounds like we don't have 800 job seekers. We have some smaller number of job seekers. Because some number of them are not seeking a job.
We have 814 eligible job seekers. And the federal government has made it very convenient for 800 of them to not seek jobs.
Or for some number.
Many of those 814 probably have a cash job on the side, too, so.
Yep. The other thing that we're anticipating around August, September is, you know, parents doing double duty as teachers, parents, and trying to work, that's just been, you know, difficult. And so if schools get back into regular session, parents won't have to pull triple duty, within there'll be more people. Historically, April, September is our biggest time of seeing people start new jobs, if those people are ready to make the change. So we're really gearing up for that timeframe.
Well, the point for me is not, I'm not trying to beat anybody over the head. What I'm trying to do is understand the actual numbers. So if we're looking at the problem that businesses are having getting employed, and we say, well, there's 814 people looking for work, well, and there's, I think there's roughly 800 jobs available in Orange County right now. But in fact, there isn't 814 people looking for work. I mean, there is some smaller number. So that would, I mean, you talked about the fact they don't mesh, which that makes sense. I mean, if you've got a high-skilled person on the work, they're not going to be looking to do a low-skill job. And low-skill people can't qualify for the high-skill job. But it's very difficult for me to understand the problem unless I have actual hard data to look at. That's my main point here. You know, just saying we've got equal number of job seekers and job openings, it doesn't sound like that's really a factual statement.
Yeah, to be clear, it's equal number of unemployed that are receiving benefits versus job opportunities.
My suggestion here is, can you do some data mining and get Mr. Johnson and Mr. Frame to break it down and find a more accurate accounting of people actually looking for jobs that are unemployed versus the total number of unemployed? I know that's one area that we're looking for is, we have 800 jobs. How many of the 814 unemployed are actively looking to fill those jobs? And within that, where is the discrepancy or the disparity between employability level and what we have in jobs? That would be a very good start, and we can go from there. Does that work?
Sounds good.
We're going to do our best to data mine that for Orange County. I will tell you, it's going to rely on our partners at Virginia Employment Commission and others. Some of these are great questions. I'm not sure we're going to have all the data. We'll go get the data that we can, there's impact.
Okay, and I would also appreciate the zip codes for the unemployment.
Yeah, because we do, the fact that we're getting more people from Orange and Gordon-Sill into the center, and the other people at the other end of the county using it, or where do they go, if anywhere?
Would that work for now, sir, or is there more that you'd like to add?
Well, I mean, yeah, I just.
Is it a start?
I would guess it's a start, yes. I mean, I'm mainly interested in data, real data. Someone, let me, this is a simple question. Someone living at the other end of the county, Lake of the Woods, for instance, just a pronoun I'm at. I mean, they could go to the Culpeper Center, correct? They don't have to go to the one in their county. So that would be probably a shorter drive for them.
And just one clarification, every person that goes through the door of Orange Workforce Center, we have information on them, Dad, I can give you all the information you need. Y'all are also asking some bigger global questions that will require economists or state agencies to provide more information. So I think that was today's.
Would we be able to determine how many Orange County residents go to Culpeper?
Yeah. It's not very many, but.
Okay.
All right, very good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Moving on to new business, awarding additional contract for general engineering and architectural services. Ms. Engels?
Good evening, everyone.
Excellent.
At the board supervisors' meeting on April 27th, contracts were awarded for general engineering and architectural services. We had a firm, EPR, submit a proposal that should have been included at the last meeting for an award. The sprout has previously had a contract with the county for general engineering and architectural services, and staff has been very pleased with their services and would like to keep working with them. Staff feels that EPR should be awarded a contract to assist with current and future projects. So we are asking approval to move forward with this contract, which would be for one year, with the possibility of four one-year renewals.
Questions? So this is to add them to the list?
Yes, they are accidentally topped off.
But they apply in the appropriate time?
Yes, they do.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Do you have that?
I see nothing under old business. Department Director tells you to move to recourse. Nothing. So why don't you make a report, Mr. Chair? Mr. Warhays?
Just one item that I sent by email, just to make everyone aware, the state of emergency regarding fuel. Just sent something out to all department heads to make contingency plans in the event that we have difficulty securing gasoline. Sheriff's Office feels like they've made such arrangements. Schools' main tank has been topped off, so we think we can probably operate for a couple of weeks. So we should be able to get through the kind of timeframe I think of a children's house. So just call that to your attention, please.
Thank you. Okay.
A quick question on that. If the school's tanks are capped off and for some reason this would go a little bit longer, would we go back to a virtual school scenario for a while?
Well, that's certainly an option, I would suppose, but we have not gone that far to try to postulate a scenario. But we certainly have practiced doing that for some time.
And I'm just saying, if for some, I understand that Colonial's supposed to be back online and getting everything back to normal. I'm just, that's just having extra.
That's right. My guess is that, I mean, they're going to, if this stays out any length of time, they'll start cracking again. And I would imagine that schools would be one of the high priorities for, so.
Well, that's part of the problem right now. They're having issue getting drivers for the tanker trucks and meeting the federal mandates as far as the hours they can drive.
That's right. That seems to be the major issue right now, so. I was just curious.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, sir. More comment. Mr. Frame?
No comment.
Mr. Johnson?
The tax bills have not gone out yet, and I've gotten a call from a constituent about that. And what I would propose is that because of the circumstances that have led to the bills going out, they're not late statutorily, but they are late compared to what they normally, the normal schedule. I would like to propose that we, once again, adopt either a 30- or 45-day delay in the implementation of penalties and interest, as we've done the past couple of cycles.
What is your proposal, sir?
Well, I would say, you know, we delay 45 days in any, there would still be due on, I think, the 7th or whatever. But there would be a 45 delay before penalties and interest were.
Great period of time.
Right.
You're second on that?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Appreciate that. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
How soon can you handle a slate?
Thank you, sir.
Mr. White?
One comment, sort of a sad comment that you're all aware of. There's a couple fatalities at the intersection of Route 52 and Independence. We can forelast that. Circumstances were a bit odd. Circumstances were a bit odd that those of us that happens to be in District Two, those of us who travel frequently had hair-raising experiences regularly. I did reach out to, to Allen Saunders of VDOT to talk about the problems there and the issues, and it's a, it's a challenging situation for which there's no easy solution. I guess you could put a traffic signal there, but nobody's really going down that path. And so I, I want to make essentially two comments. Allen was very receptive. As a matter of fact, that afternoon after I spoke with him, he and the safety engineer went out started assessing the what-if game. What could we do in the short term and the long term? Long term, it's a possibility that a major renovation could take place under smart scale of funding and these kind of things. So that could come before us at, at some point. Short term, it's probably going to be what, what they like to euphemistically call traffic calming, which could be anything from signage and flashing lights to rumble strips to lord knows what. But I think we're gonna have to take some relatively aggressive steps. That, that road on, anybody who travels and knows on, especially on the weekends with the late end of traffic, like, is, is, is pretty, pretty tough. And it's actually gotten worse because of improvements that were made at five twenty-two and twenty, because the traffic can move through there better. It's, it's a situation that is gonna probably come before us at, at some point for your listening to move up the list in terms of road projects.
Very much so. Marshall.
Uh, no comments right now.
I have one myself. Next is informational items. Next would be appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. Next is the calendar. Do we have anything?
No, sir. We have no public hearings scheduled.
All right, very good. That's for your, your own pleasure. Are you okay doing the book here? Very good. All right, we can move into the public hearings. Let's see, we got Mrs. Thornton on line. Public hearing is SUP twenty-one oh one, William Renaud doing business at P-Mon Process. Mr. Renaud here, just here, and Sandra is here. Sandra, could you please go ahead and do your presentation?
Uh, yes, good evening. Um, this is an application, as you mentioned, by William Renaud to operate a livestock slaughtering and processing facility on property owned by Knight Cattle Corp., located at one five four one five James Madison Highway. The property is located in District One, is zoned general industrial. Its future land use map designation is economic development. The effective acreage is twenty-five point seven three acres. The application was made pursuant to zoning ordinance section seventy dash five four three, item fifteen, rendering plant, pantry, or other similar use of an odorous nature involving the production or processing of animal products. And as I mentioned, and as you know, this has been the site of a livestock market for, for quite some time. Um, the, the planning commission opened their public hearing on the application on March fourth, received public comments through March twenty-third, and concluded their deliberations and formulated a recommendation for approval on April first, twenty twenty-one. The commission received five sets of comments and considered, that they considered, three were in support of the proposal, and two proposed questions and concerns. Um, one of those sets, uh, one of those commenters was particularly concerned about the potential for storage of byproducts outside the, uh, structure. Um, and during the commission's discussions with the applicant, Mr. Renaud emphasized that there would be no outside storage of non, non-processed byproducts. It is understood that all slaughtering would take place inside the structure, and that a valid Virginia Department of Health permit for the septic system is required for the Virginia Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services to certify the facility and the products. Mr. Renaud indicated that he was amenable to a condition that would limit the number of animals, which would be cows and hogs, processed to twenty-five per week. On a vote of one to four, uh, four to one, the commission voted to recommend approval of the special use permit with conditions. And I'm happy to review those now if you'd like, or wait until later.
Okay, um, we, we're gonna have to review those. And I actually have a question regarding the limit of twenty-five per week. What is the, the reasoning for that?
Uh, I, I believe that the commission felt that they didn't want to leave it completely open-ended. It was not that they don't want to see the activity thrive, but since Mr. Renaud had indicated that that was acceptable to him, I, I think they just wanted to have some demonstration that all, you know, the installation and the operation were all, you know, that, that the facilities were adequate to support the use.
All right. Do you have any, anybody have any other questions before we hear the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. White. Just so I understand, can we review the conditions of the approval? I wasn't aware, besides the limiting the twenty-five.
Okay, yeah, is, what are the conditions for them, Mr. White?
Yes, I'm, I'm sorry. I, I was thinking Mr. Renaud had received a copy of the staff report. I know that I didn't forward the.
I'm saying I did, ma'am. I, I just didn't know that there was.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said, but I, I will review them. Um, so for the, the terms of the special use permit is to, this permit is to allow operation of a livestock slaughtering and processing facility on tax map parcel fifty-seven dash thirty-four. Controlling documents shall be the documents submitted with the application dated January twenty-six, twenty twenty-one, and the conditions as set forth herein. Use and development of the subject property shall be in substantial conformance with these conditions. The zoning administrator shall determine substantial conformance. The property owner slash facility operator shall be responsible for obtaining all required county licenses, site plan approvals, building permits, health permits, Virginia Department of Transportation permits, zoning permits, stormwater permits, and erosion and sediment control permits, as may be applicable. A thirty-inch stop sign shall be installed along with a twenty-four-inch wide thermoplastic stop bar at the exit of the commercial entrance. The mailbox location shall be adjusted to ensure that it does not block intersection site distance to the south of the entrance. Storage of non-processed byproducts shall be in barrels stored inside the building. There shall be no outside storage of such byproducts. Virginia Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services certification shall be maintained. This special use permit shall be issued to the applicant and is not transferable to a subsequent operator or property owner. The number of animals to be slaughtered shall be limited to twenty-five per week.
Okay, thank you.
Why is that, why is that not on?
I, I, exactly. Why don't we have that in our board pack?
That's, that's not, that, that F is not in the board packet.
The page that's in front of you is from Sandra's staff report that is prepared for the planning commission public hearing. Item F was not added until the planning commission's public hearing at the planning commission's recommendation. Sandra summarized that in her action memo, and then I have it contained in the draft ordinance for the board's consideration.
Okay.
It appears it was also in the resolution that the planning commission adopted.
Yes, yes, I, I remember it being in there, but it, it just wasn't here.
Yeah, yeah, and the resolution.
I don't know why, I don't know why we include this in our board package.
Correct.
The, the full staff report?
Yeah, I mean, it, it should be updated. The staff report, the staff report, this is a staff report to the planning commission.
Yes.
The staff report should be updated to the board of supervisors. This is a memorandum to the Orange County Planning Commission. And this, this, if, if this is included in the packet at all, because, you know, I'm two decades in on having this conversation where, how come it's not on here? This was at the front of the pack. It should be at the back of the pack, if, if anywhere. And an updated one should be.
That would say supplemental report for the.
Yeah, so supplemental memo, but I mean, it was.
Should go to the board of supervisors, which would include all the changes that the planning commission made.
So anyway, I, I just, would request that staff consider perhaps changing the way they do that, just so we, we don't ask that question every time it comes up.
Mr. Renaud, did you have any other comments or concerns?
No, sir. I, as far as any of those concessions or stipulations or requirements, I'm kind of, it was a problem. The, the twenty-five animals a week. Again, we're, we are battling a little bit of a stereotype with, with the industry. And truthfully, for us to get above that capacity, we'd have to come back in front of the board and request to build additional structures and, and equipment and room to do that. So I was fine with the twenty-five capacity.
Okay, so, so the twenty-five is, is truly based on the current structure and capacity that you have?
Yes.
And you would have to come back and amend, you'd have to get building permits and everything, and then come back.
Originally, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Renaud, it kind of pleaded out that there was gonna be so many, so many, so many hogs and not to exceed this many cows or whatever. And, and so actually, the, it was simple, the process was simplified a little bit to set twenty-five hours. We, we don't really care whether it's, what the mix between hogs and cows or sheep or whatever is.
Correct, so, and, and, and our thinking is that, again, we, we know there's some very stereotype history with the industry. We figured that gave everyone a little bit of ease and allowed the schedules a little smoother. And, and we didn't think it was a very big concession on our part.
What, what is your background, this type of business?
Uh, it's not terribly long. I, I was Marine Corps, spent twenty years in the power industry. Got engaged to the local farmer's daughter and tried some of the beef from the farm that I'd never had before, straight, you know, straight in the farmer's table. Was blown away with it, so I just took that idea and started a company and started labeling beef by a local producer or something from my own farm. Took that label, had some success with it, and the first limitation of those, uh, label like that or that part of that industry is inventory control. So after COVID, I was lucky enough because of some things we were planning. And in March, I committed to eight dates a month with Falkir Sunus. And right after pandemic hit in March, everything got hooked up for twenty twenty, and now they're currently booked through twenty twenty-one. With the, with my motivation to, to build label in, in a business that's slightly separate from the P-Mon process, we knew that we, we just, we had to get control of our own processes.
What, what capacity does P-Mon process, what is their capacity appropriate?
Our, that's, we are P-Mon processing coaliers.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, so they're on thirty, one hundred and fifty a week. And again, they're booked through twenty twenty-one, and well, in the twenty-two. And if you're familiar with their facility, as far as footprint, it, it truthfully does not take a large square footage to process the beef or pork. Your square footage is cooler, walk-in cooler, walk-in for these other states. I'm friends with the owner of Falkir Sunus, and I got a lot of guidance through some of these systems or processes. We're working with V-DAX and have, continue to work with V-DAX and USDA. We're waiting for kind of a ruling from them, hopefully in the next couple of days. In fact, to apply to both or can I operate under USDA in a custom exempt? But in the end, it's really the same process. I may just be a little avoid having to deal with it on the state level. But that's for the custom exempt. So our goal is to, on approval of this SUP, we are going to finish the, really start the construction of the walk-in coolers. We discussed this building permit and everything else, so we feel like we have our ducks in a row for that. As soon as we have the coolers built, we're gonna open up under a custom exempt, which either through USDA or through V-DAX is an inspection process, which meets the guidelines of my specialties. Immediately after that, we are going to start the state inspection process. Our ultimate goal is to get the state inspection, because it allows me, it's my label and the producer to get my product to market. It also allows other, other farmers to actually take their product to the market for a reason.
Any other questions, Mr. White? Thank you.
Good, one, one question that came up, so we've discussed in discussions. To my understanding, you were, you were not going to be processing game animals of any kind or that at this point, that's not, these are all animals that you would slaughter on site and process.
We are allowed to do it. They have some guidelines and some time-space separations for equipment and everything else. But with the demand for the beef and pork, it doesn't make any sense to deal with that again.
What, what type of storage are you going to use for your rendering byproducts?
That all, everything, all the byproducts go into fifty-five gallon drums. That, everything, besides, the only thing we're putting into the, to the ground or anything else is gray water and the proof and the blood. I've got the environmental engineer that came out and did the survey of our septic system. And this is the letter that I'll re-sign with the partner PEL to approve our septic system. It, it's not bad for the, the, you know, the liver protein is not bad for our septic system. So we're required to do two pump outs a year, very simple, very straightforward. In the event there's any issue with that, our immediate backup is tank, ground tank, and that'll be treated just like the fifty-five gallon drums. But we already have the approval for the septic system. I think that the ground tank would be something we'd have to tackle when we want to expand capacity. Now, the protein takes all of that, and we have to keep that in control.
You do?
Yes, they, they.
So that will stay indoors?
They do stay indoors. Yes, sir. And, and we have to, by contract with them, if, the amount they charge us for rotten byproducts that were spoiled byproducts is.
And that's weekly pickup?
Yes, sir. And hopefully, we name the building twice, depending on our, our barrels and determining where our space and things.
Anything else? Nope, thank you very much, sir.
Yes, sir. So you're done.
Open the public hearing. Simpson, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman, and we did not receive any comments before the due deadline either.
Close the public hearing. All right, like, can you entertain a motion? Either approve or disapprove.
I'd approve.
I'll second. Any further discussion? This Simpson, roll call, will?
Yes, sir. Mr. Free?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Crozier?
Aye.
Mr. Marshall? And Mr. White?
Aye.
I'll see you, Greg.
Thank you very much, Sandra.
You're welcome.
Good evening, ma'am. Mr. Washington.
If, if I may, I apologize to staff for getting a broken, uh, packet item. I, I really wasn't set to staff, I'm mad at myself for asking the same stupid question probably half a dozen times over the last ten years.
We'll work on a more efficient way to get it.
I wish I had learned.
So somebody else helps to help you a lot.
Yeah, right. So, so help me, help me not be dumb. Yeah, right. So help me not be dumb.
Sir, with a couple of comments.
Thank you for your special attendance, Mr. Chair.
My pleasure.
Mr. Wester.
All right. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Orange County desires to discuss a closed meeting of the following matters. Discussion or consideration of acquisition of real property or disposition of public beheld real property or discussion or open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position negotiating strategy of public body consuming property in Rhodesville. Consultation of legal counsel reported retained by the public body regarding explicitly legal matters requiring divisional legal vice process counsel concerning fireworks. And whereas pursuant to sections 2.2, 37, 11, 8, 3, and AA to the code of remaining such discussions being incurred in closed meeting, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Orange County dishears by authorized discussion for state matters in closed meeting. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are in closed. I'd say that.
Mark?
Yep.
We put the PC of tools and the ordinance on the front of the pack is all the way at the end of all the other reports. It might cause a security issue.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I was going to mean. Yeah, put that in there just, almost like, you know.
Like this is what you're going to.
Cole, we're ready to start the live stream.
You're good to go.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely. Members of the board, to the best of your knowledge, were the only matters discussed in the closed meeting, public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and that only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting. Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Crozier.
Aye.
Mr. White.
Aye.
Mr. Marshall.
Aye.
And Mr. Britton.
Aye.
Five zero.
We entertain one more question. We adjourn. Thank you. On the table. Aye. Adjourn. Adjourn.
Thank you, Cole.